Before we say the pledge of allegiance and begin our meeting together. As we have in the past -- Does that -- A little more, a little more volume here? Raise your hand if you can hear. Okay, good. As we have in the past, we're going to remember those who have left us in the preceding year. And I thank Jonathan Stevens and Jeanette for putting this list together. So, in the past year, residents of Andover or folks who were, maybe have not lived here recently but were buried here or have some other connection here, I will read their names and then ask you if there's anyone who needs to be added to this list. Ralph W. Abbott died August 11th, 2019. Mark L. Aldrich died August 28th, 2019. Irene H. Gordon died February 23rd, 2020. Tiffany Gordon died November 19th, 2019. Florence Hare died October 9th, 2019. Charles Jerome died July 2nd, 2019. Nathan Pond died November 3rd, 2019. Marie Servas died October 5th, 2019. Carol Sweet died October 30th, 2019. Lauren Warmuth died September 2nd, 2019. There are other names which need to be added to this list. Or anyone else that we would like to remember at this time. As I have also done in past years, it would be wonderful to get a fix on our youngest participant today and maybe if we don't want to say our oldest, maybe our longest-lived member of the Andover community. So, I'm trying to think of, kind of doing this by sight. Brooke, who just walked in, might be the youngest person, I don't know.
There's some children coming in.
Okay, all right. And who gets the prize for the longest resident of Andover? Is it Reno or is it Allen? Allen says Reno. You okay? Yeah, no, I -- well, there might be someone older, but they're not here.
There's a 10-month-old that's --
All right, there's a 10-month-old. And Reno, how many years have we had the pleasure of your company?
Eighty-four and a half.
Eighty-four and a half. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. It's great to have you here. At this time, I'd ask you to stand and face the platform and say our pledge of allegiance. Ready, set, go.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'm going to do things just a little bit differently this year. In a moment, I'm going to invite Representative Tom Bosch to come forward. He has some reports from up here and surrounding. We're going to, if you notice in your town report and the warning, the agenda for today's meeting, we're going to -- We're going to have a discussion on the Green Mountain USB budget, which we vote on Tuesday. We'll have that at that time in the meeting, so that's Article 10 on your warning. So, Representative Bosch. I'll let you have the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select board members, thank you and thank you for inviting me to speak here today. First of all, I'd like to say, sure, we do have a few handouts. I've got them on the handout table back there. This is my town meeting report. It shows what I think are the important things that have gone on in this section. They're on the table back there. I allege emails on this and you can contact me anytime and send me an email. Also on the back table, I've got a bulletin from the Vermont Department of Health regarding the coronavirus and some recommendations they have and what they're planning to do about it. And they've had several meetings regarding this issue. And as we know, this is a very serious issue that's facing our country. This is my -- I've been there three and a half years and it's a very interesting job. I've got to say, it's very interesting. It's periods of boredom, periods of frustration, but I'm still honored to be there and I thank you all for sending me there. It's, I walk into that state house every morning and I feel honored. And it is truly a great job to have. I wish you all could have it. And first of all, I've got a few items that have happened recently and I just want to go over them. I'll be very brief. Lowell Lake, I know a lot of you folks have been interested in what's going on at Lowell Lake. The Commissioner, Michael Snyder, of the Forest Parks and Recreation, the head of the state park system, announced this week that they're not going, they're going, they're going to only make investments on day use. They're going to improve bathrooms, the roads, and maybe a parking area. They're going to promote any overnight services and activities for the time being. I doubt you'd be happy about that. Also, about a year ago, we all heard about Springfield Hospital and the very difficult time they're having in Nashville. This is very, very serious. As part of a group, legislators are asked to sit in on meetings that the governor has put forth and hired people to help solve this very, very serious problem. Well, you may recall, the state of Vermont invested a million dollars to keep that hospital alive. This last week, they all had, the state of Vermont hired a bankruptcy lawyer to protect the state's interests. So, we've got skin in that game. It's a very complex issue. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of stakeholders involved here, and there's been a lot of work done. It appears that in the next four to six weeks, there will be a resolution coming about between the stakeholders, the banks, the, all the parties involved. In the next four to six weeks, I'm guardedly optimistic, there'll be a very positive outcome. What else do I have here? And lastly, I got to talk to you about this week, the legislature approved commercialization of cannabis. I did a lot of research on this subject. I followed the subject very closely. I got more emails on this issue than I've gotten in the last three and a half years. Pro and against. I've just got to say that, in the end, I could not in good conscience vote for this bill. I voted no, and I know some of you are not going to be happy with that, but I had to do it. And that's about all I have to say. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Could you be a little more specific than positive outcome on the hospital?
I can't talk about everything. There's a lot of financial issues here and there's a lot of detail and I, in another month, you will know everything.
How about just as it relates to me getting sick?
Are you getting sick? I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the outcome will be, the hospital will be a better place. Right now, they've already reached stability. They're staying alive right now. And they're taking patients and they've stopped losing employees and I'm optimistic about that. And I think there will be a settlement that will keep the organization going. That's all I can say right now. Right now, the tone of the people, of the stakeholders and the people that are meeting in this, including myself, is optimism. There's a lot of things going on. Anything can happen. Any other questions?
Yeah, Tom, you've got two back there. Gordon.
Yep, Hank.
Well, Gordon, Gordon's first.
Okay, Gordon's first.
Yes, Representative Bosch. There are two measures pending before the legislature right now. One is H. 868, relates to reorganizing the state into 11 assemblies of the people, and the other one deals with a constitutional amendment respecting climate change. How long to get your take on those?
Well, you lose the bill, this is to create a plan for climate change, just on your second question. We're going to go, there's no money in the bill, there's no taxes in the bill, but it's a plan to go forward to create a state-run proposal. Right now, various committees have things going on, various agencies have things going on to thwart global warming. Nobody knows how effective they are, nobody knows what the results are, nobody knows how much money is going into them. The idea is to look at all those current processes and come up with a plan for the future of global warming. And I can't answer your first question. I'm not familiar with that constitutional amendment.
Can you at least indicate that this proposed constitutional amendment will not affect Article One, or Section, Chapter One, Article Two of the Constitution, which protects property rights? That the state is not coming in through this particular amendment to water it down so that they can take property away from the individuals who own it?
That's hard to handle. You've got to understand, most of the people that are in that legislature are like me. They respect property rights, they respect the rights of the individual, and that will not happen. I can assure you, not while I'm in.
Hank, Hank, you're next.
In regards to what Gordon was talking about, this has been on the news and was brought to my attention, is, they call it PR 9, which is a amendment to the state constitution where the state can claim the resources on your property, is that, and I think it's the same thing.
Same thing, I have to, I don't know the detail of that. I don't want to --
I would like to know who's responsible for this.
Well, it's not a bill. It hasn't come to the House floor and, you know, right now, thus far this year, Hank, we've had 1,500 bills come before us. And I'm, my ears are open. When I feel they're important, I'm looking at them. I can't look at 1,500. And I don't, when the important ones are coming along, when they become a bill, there's a lot of talk about bills. When they become a bill, I look at it.
This is amendment to the state constitution.
Well, this is, this is what they did. It's got to come through the House. I'll look at it then.
Well, we'd like to know who's respons, who would --
I'll find out.
Who came up with a ludicrous idea of turning --
I don't know.
Turning this place into Cuba or Russia?
I don't know. I will find out.
Well, I have enough, two more little questions for you, but I want to commend you on, at least you voted against the part, but I was looking forward to asking you last year about your signature on the carbon tax bill, which got put on the back burner.
I didn't sign any carbon tax bill.
Well, according to the, you signed according to what's listed changed your mind.
What I did is --
Online, you said that you voted for it.
I did not vote for any carbon tax bill.
Oh, that's good news. How about the late-term abortion bill?
Okay, late-term abortion was a resolution we passed that would continue abortion as it currently exists, according to the Supreme Court rulings of the United States. It just agreed with those, with those positions of the Supreme Court.
Okay, you're off the clock.
Fran, Fran Salazar, and then Allen.
All right, Fran.
We are somewhere.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The article that you're talking about clearly states that the state would be entitled to all the resources of our property. Now, that sounds to me like even the water that my well gives me will be now the state's. I mean, it --
Was this in the climate change bill?
No, it was not. It was another article.
I'm not familiar with it. I'm not familiar with it and I will, I will look it up.
Okay, thank you.
Allen. Allen.
Pre-wedding bill, I saw you sponsored that, one of the sponsors.
Yes.
That's going to be very expensive for the towns, the way that's written up.
Well, I have to say, since --
We cannot truck all the brush and wood to us.
I understand, I understand. And your select board, you sent, sent a letter to me with all their criticisms. We entered those into, that bill has been redone four times since it was, since it was first written. We redid one yesterday, a final draft, we think. I turned a copy over to your select board today and I'm asking for your comments. That draft we did yesterday was turned over to alleged counsel, which is the lawyers that look over all these bills to see whether or not they're constitutional or whether they interfere with other statutes. We did some major changes in the bill from when you first read it. And so, I've asked, that you ask Chris, he's got a copy of our current draft. If you have any further criticisms, email me this week. I will get them for taking testimony the following week on this bill again. It's been redone four times since you first last saw it.
Other questions? Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you. You guys are easy.
Thank you, Representative Bosch. Does everyone who needs one have a copy of the town report in today's agenda? Also, Jeanette has the sign-up list going around. You're good, okay. As we, as we proceed with the meeting, this is, this is all news to you, but the first time that you have a question or wish to make an amendment, or second, it'd be wonderful if you could state your name and even rise, so that we can make sure we get everyone identified. Lastly, this is a meeting for business for those folks who are legal residents of the town of Andover, so we welcome our neighbors and guests here, but we ask you refrain from voting. So, I'll read the warning here and we'll jump into the agenda. To the inhabitants of the town of Andover in the county of Windsor, the city of Vermont, qualified to vote in town affairs. You are hereby warned to attend the town hall in Andover on this day in the morning to act on the following items. Item number one, to choose a moderator for a term to end June 30th, 2021. The current moderator is John Bliss. We have nominations in seconds for the board.
Who's the moderator?
Joe.
I would nominate John Bliss.
Joe has nominated, Joe has nominated John Bliss.
Second.
We've had a second. Are there other nominations? There being none, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for John Bliss. Article number two here, and act on the auditor's report. Where is our auditor? There he is. Would you like to come to the mic or are you, yeah, I don't care.
Good morning. On behalf of the auditors, Bill Jessup, Cindy Egotall, and myself, we have tested and examined the financial records of the town of Andover and to the best of our ability, find them to be in order. Thank you very much, Jeanette, for all of your patience and effort as we go through this annual meeting. Thank you.
Do we have questions for the auditors? We need a motion to accept, a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report.
I made a motion to accept the audit.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's been a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Article number three, to elect the following town officers for these positions. And here, I'm going to ask Jeanette to explain, there's been a, there will probably be a change in your select board, and so, I'm going to ask Jeanette to explain that to you so that you know what you're voting on.
So, what you'll see is three select board members up for, well, two actually, up for reelection. Barry Williams, after a long time doing this work, has decided not to seek reelection this year. His term is a one-year position. What Mark Gordon is asking is to be reelected in a one-year term rather than a three-year. So, what we actually have open at this time is a three-year position. And then Jed LaPriez is also up for reelection for this one-year term.
So, is everyone, is everyone clear on what's occurring? We're going to, we're going to lose Barry come what may, and we're going to add a qualified person to a three-year position.
If someone else wants the one-year, I don't mind stepping down either, so.
Mark, Mark says that very reluctantly, he would be willing to step down. So, there's a position for a three-year position open. Are there nominations from the floor? Nominations in seconds.
I nominate Chris Walker.
Chris Walker has been, would you identify yourself? I don't know you.
My name is Lori Walker.
Hi, Lori. Lori has nominated the person I presume is her husband.
That's correct.
I don't think that's an evidence, I think that's just fine.
I'm second.
Fran Salazar is second. Mr. Parliamentarian, we can skip the floor open for further nominations. Is that correct?
I think you should apply for all possible nominees.
Yes. There's been one person nominated. Would you like to tell them about yourself?
No.
You're not going to get any votes here.
No, absolutely. My name's Chris Walker. I've lived in town for a little over two and a half years, but I grew up in Chester. I graduated from Green Mountain High School, joined the military, lived in Virginia for 29 years before I moved back to the area. I have served as zoning board administrator for approximately a year and a half. And I just, I'm not trying to change anything in the community. I think the select board's done a good job. I heard there was some openings, so I just wanted to step up and try to, try to keep things going the way they've been going. And I like to be involved with the community. There's no room to complain if you don't get involved, so I want to be involved and then, you know, hopefully keep things going smoothly. But that's, that's a little bit about me and I live on Lovejoy Brook Road. Do you have any questions? Just vote for me, I'll do it.
What do you do for a living?
I sell cars. I work at Benson Chevrolet in Ludlow.
Jim, good job.
Great, thanks, Chris. Do we have other nominations from the board? The bar is high now, because you're going to have to tell a whole bunch of stories about yourself. Other nominations?
Congratulations.
Is this the three-year or the one-year?
This is the three-year position. Other nominations?
Connie LaPriez worked for three of them.
You tried, but it didn't take her. So, there being none, closed nominations, and ask all those in favor, Chris Walker has been nominated as second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Chris. Thanks for stepping up. We are on to the, so basically, now I'm confused, Jeanette, so now we're on --
In one year.
We're on to the one-year, which is, in your warning, is the Jed LaPriez. So, despite the best efforts of Connie, you're up for one year. Barry.
Are you big second nominations for one-year term?
We are.
I would like to nominate Mark Gordon.
Mark Gordon has been nominated for the one-year term. Is there a second? Gene has seconded. Other nominations? There being none, I ask closed nominations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. There's an echo in here. Pay it, no mind. So, now we have another one-year position. Is that correct, Jeanette? We have, we have the second of the one-year position.
Currently held by Jed.
Currently held by Jed, who is, still would like to be nominated. He's willing to be nominated for one year. All right. He's willingly sitting at the chair. Fran.
I'll nominate Jed for the one-year position.
Fran Salazar has nominated Jed for the one-year position. We have a second.
I'll nominate him.
He's been seconded by Jill. Other nominations? There being none, closed nominations, ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations, gentlemen. We move on to the position of auditor. It's a three-year position and you'll note above the stars in your, your program that Bill Jessup is not seeking reelection. And so, I'm advised that the select board is perfectly comfortable approaching a qualified person at some later time to fill this position if we do not fill it in this meeting, so that the select board is comfortable taking that approach. However, if there is a person present who would like to put their name in the, in the hat for this, for this position, now's your time to speak up. So, there being none, our process here, I guess, would be, what, Joe? Since the select board is going to approach a qualified individual.
If the voters do not fill out the office, the select board is empowered to make a temporary appointment and fill the next annual meeting.
Yes, but do we need a vote from the body?
No.
Okay. So, if you're okay with that, you don't have to vote on that article. The select board will approach a qualified individual to fill that, that role. We now move on to the position of Lister. Excuse me, no, the most important position of all. Town clerk, three-year term, Jeanette Hay, current clerk.
Who's moderator?
Yes, Joe.
I would nominate Jeanette Hay as, uh, town clerk for a three-year term.
Joe has nominated Jeanette Hay. Fran has seconded. Are there other nominations? There being none, I would close nominations and ask the body to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations to that. Position of Lister for a three-year term, Francesca Salazar, in the current position. Nominations. Gordon.
Francesca.
Gordon Payne is nominated Francesca. Is there a second? Gene Peters has seconded. Other nominations? There being none, unclosed nominations, and ask the body to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Move on to the position of town treasurer for a one-year term. Jeanette is the current holder.
Who's the moderator?
Joe.
I would nominate Jeanette Hay as town treasurer for one year.
Seconds?
Aye.
Gene has seconded. Other nominations? There being none, unclosed nominations, ask the meeting to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Position of town tax collector for a one-year term, also, also held by Jeanette Hay. Are there nominations?
Who's the moderator?
Joe.
I would nominate Jeanette Hay as tax collector for one year.
Jeanette has been nominated. Is there a second? Fran, seconds? Other nominations? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Position of town Sexton for a term of one year. Hank Maudy, current holder of that office. Other nominations? Other nominations?
I'd nominate Mark.
Jill Pond has nominated Hank. Is there a second? Gordon Payne has seconded. Are there other nominations? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Position of cemetery commissioner for a term of three years, term held by Nick Baker. Are there nominations for this position?
I nominate Nick Baker.
Jean Peters has nominated Nick Baker. Is there a second? It's been nominated and seconded. Other nominations? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Position of agent to prosecute for a term of one-year. Never prosecuted anything in my life. Fran?
I'll nominate John Bliss.
John Bliss has been nominated.
I'm second.
Brooke, seconds? Are there other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? A term of one-year for town constable, Al Peters, current holder of that position. Nominations? Deb?
I nominate Al Peters.
Deb has nominated Al Peters. Leo, a second? Are there other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you all for your patience. Congratulations to those who've stepped into these important roles. And we move on to Article Three. To see if the town, Article Four, excuse me. Not only can I think, but I can read. Article Four, to see if the town will have all taxes paid into the treasury as provided by law, and if so, to authorize the Select Board to establish a payment schedule. Are you up, Chris? Yeah. So at this time, Chris will walk us. Oh, you're up for six, okay.
Do you need someone to move to do that?
So we need a...
Could we, could we have a schedule that, that the taxes are going to be paid by?
So we need a little explanation of Article Four, to see if the town will have all taxes paid with the Select Board, or someone like to just explain with that, what you're asking? Yeah?
Just the times, the times that the taxes are going to be due.
Probably the same dates, yep.
So essentially, for the voters, nothing is changing here. We're simply asking, we're, we're authorizing the Select Board to do what they have done in the past in terms of dealing with liabilities and encumbrances of the town. So, do we need a motion, Joe?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I guess we need a motion to adopt Article Four, right?
I'll make that motion.
Joe has made a motion that we adopt Article Four. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Barry, seconds? Further discussion, clarification? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Article Five, to see when the town, the whole town meeting in 2021. As you'll see the description in your, in your program. So now's the time for your ideas about town meeting next year.
Mr. Moderator.
Joe.
I would move that the whole town meeting in 2021, on February 27th, 2021, which is the Saturday prior to the traditional town, Vermont Town Meeting Day.
Joe has made a motion, is our second.
Second.
Leo, seconds? Any discussion, questions? Jeanette, do you generally take general attendance numbers from these meetings? Do you have a sense of whether we're up or down this year?
Maybe around over last year, I haven't counted the names there in town.
Right.
We usually hover around 70 to 75 voters.
Right. Obviously, one of our concerns is to make sure that the most number of voters and citizens get to town meeting. It is your opportunity to affect the business of your town. I love what Chris said. If you don't get involved, you can't complain. Or shouldn't complain. It certainly, it weakens your position a little bit. But even if you're not talking about complaining, it is wonderful to see you all here. We always have a good time. I really come for the food, so, not really, but, but it's a great gathering for the town. So I guess the question for me is, is there anything we could do in terms of changing the date or time that would encourage more people? I think we've had this discussion in the past, and we've come up with the idea that this is pretty much the day we need to have it on. But are there other ideas, other thoughts? Some of you have been around long enough to remember what in town meeting happened overnight.
Yeah.
In the basement of the town clerk's office, that was, that was always a good time. So, no further discussion or, or proposals. Joe has made a motion to hold town meeting next year. It would be February 27th, which is the Saturday prior to the traditional town, Vermont Town Meeting Day. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The motion carries. Now, Chris, you're up. Chris Spum will run us through an explanation of the budget.
We'll see, probably milk routine.
Can everybody see?
This is all the years I was talking about. We had last year's results, which is the year 2018, 2019. We were talking about that, and we were talking about the Highway Bridge Fund, Capital Equipment Fund. Next year's proposed budget, no, no, not the year where you, beyond. The voters are requested to, to my slot. They're requesting again. So we're going to do the surplus. Just by, there's a substantial surplus again. We're asking the, the town, most people consider putting half of it in the capital equipment fund and half of it in the bridge and highway fund. Suggesting that you split that into Hybridge Fund and Capital Equipment Fund. So we have that capital funding to support the projects that are coming up, and also capital equipment fund, because the grader's going to be replacing it sooner or later. We're at the point now where it's not really worth trading in, so we're running it into the sunset.
Chris, can you, for those who may not know, which, which vehicle are you talking about?
The grader, road grader. Okay, so here we are. Balance is, balance is at 618, 6318. Highway Bridge Fund, 638,000 and change. We put 82,500,000 in budget for it. Half of the 2016, '17 surplus was added to it, that was last year's surplus. 63,000, there was a subtotal of 793,176. Spent so far, I reckon that's 70,000 on, I believe it's engineering, on the Hybridge project. We have a balance, balance of 736 and change. 2019 budget, proposing, no, not this year. 525 in it this year, and half of the surplus last year, 23.
Chris, you have a question for Paul on that.
Okay, thanks.
Chris, Paul Stone. Chris, I was wondering what the schedule for state matching funds is for paving, and how often they're discussing that for you.
About every seven years.
Seven years.
Five to seven years. We did, we did manage to get a grant last, last year. Doing it a little different, you know, giving you taxing funds. We give you up to $175,000 grant. Five to seven years. We applied last year, and we got some money that somebody else turned out, believe it or not.
Chris, John, do you think that, do you get to sit on the other side of the screen so that you can see?
Oh, yeah, Chris.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So, I gave it a subtotal of just over a million last, last year. We spent 454,000 on paving last year. Price ceiling of $350,000. Engineering work, we're getting a hybrid, $700,000. And that was funded, as of 31st of 19, was 602,000. This year, we're going to need another 250,000 for paving. Finish off, we topped an avenue up there last mile. And we need the, the Hybridge Fund, we only need about 100,000 for that. The state is going to match 5%. So we're getting a $1.7 million bridge for about 100,000.
Chris, for those who may not know, identify the Hybridge.
The Hybridge is the one just below the Oxbow, above mountain. Which currently has two steel plates in it, holding it down.
What's the schedule of that?
Two more years? Two more years. The road trip did a nice little job, put the patches in. Chris?
Peter, I would, this 100,000, is that just for this year? Or will more money be needed next year?
No, that's going to cover the job.
That will cover the job?
They actually won't be spending it, they'll do the job in two years' time.
Chris? Fran, want to mention that we're going to shut the road down because we get more money from the state.
They'll, they'll match 10%. They may as well match 10%, but if they put in temporary bridge, that's going to jack the price up to another $500,000. But if we shut the road down for six weeks, it'll match it with 5%.
So it'll be shut from Horseshoe Acres to Paul's, basically.
To North Hill.
Yeah, to North Hill, right, and that section. Does everybody know what we're talking about? Anybody, newcomers, not there, where this is all happening? And over Weston Road.
Yeah, and over Weston Road.
Yeah.
Paul, I just wanted you to understand, we, we did get matching funds this year for the paving. And everybody in town understands, they should understand that our roads are deteriorating at a rate that is much faster than what we are going to get matching funds from the state. If we do not keep putting money into the road and bridge program, our main roads and our back roads, they're, they're going to deteriorate faster than we can take care of it. So that's why as a board, we want to put as much money as we can so that we can, like the 250,000 we have put in for the paving this year, that is all being, the, the, the town itself is incurring all the expenses for the paving. We're getting no matching funds, and we will not be getting matching funds for another seven years. So I just want everybody to understand the predicament that this Select Board's in. It's, it's not a pretty picture and stuff. It's, the, the, the maintenance on these town roads is going to be a high expense for this town. There's no question about that.
Paul?
So 100,000, I believe, this year. Who will be fiscally responsible for that money maintaining in the account during the time it takes to do that project? Is there a minimum balance to draw from the highway account to keep that 100,000? How do we preserve that 100,000?
It'll, it'll stay into, into that account until we get a bill from the state for our, our portion of the bridge expense and stuff. It's, it isn't going to go into a state account. That stays in our account until we get billed for it.
Is that supposed to say we don't spend it before we do that?
Right.
We're, we're just showing it, because it's expensive to look at that number. So, 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 more questions on that? So, at the end of this year, beginning with $80,000. $65,000 that year is funded, that year is 700, 152,000. End of that year, bought a new truck, it was a single axle. Big truck, bought for 143. Balance at 6319, end of that year was a big balance amount. Put another 65,000 in to budget for next year, the year running. And superbly, a lot of mowing tractor, for 45,000. Some balance now stands as a resident, calendar year, 28,000 into, put that back on.
Chris, can you say again what your thoughts are about the, when we would purchase a grader? When, when we would need to pull the trailer out?
I really don't know. We're hoping to get five or six more years maybe.
Yeah.
Mowing tractor, I understand that's a new vehicle for the town. We've never had a mowing tractor. Is the frequency of mowing going to change from once a year for this tractor? Or how is it designed?
We're hoping.
You've got a plan?
Best of plan. We're looking at more, more passes, maybe reduce the aerial passes to get the brush back. And we weren't getting the fourth.
We're trying to get out of the poison car stuff.
Yeah. The idea is, it's got a cab on it, so the guys can actually mow in the rain. In their rainy days, and they don't have anything to do. No, they don't, they don't have anything to do. These are more things to do, more options in the rainy days.
Are there any plans to put money aside for the grader?
Here?
No.
That's what this account is, is for capital equipment expenditures. So what, what they're indicating is that at some point, we're going to need about $400,000 to buy a grader, and this is where this account stands right now.
Well, I guess my question is, are we going to add over the next four to five years money to that account so that we have money for a new grader?
New grader truck.
Okay.
There is a budgeted amount each year. This year, it stands at $65,000.
Okay.
And one of, so the proposal that Chris was talking about was applying half of the surplus also to this fund for this reason.
Okay.
We're also, before we, the grader, probably going to put in another ton truck.
Oh, yeah. We have a plan to have some money available for that, for the next five years. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Next year's proposed budget. Proposed budget, 887,000, 8175. Total income taxes would be 752,801. Other incomes, state road taxes and other things. So this pension budget's 887,000. An increase, last year's, the year end was 8861. The increase is 25,000. The increase is twenty-five thousand, nine fifty-three percent. The main reason for that is the addition of the shares down and the increase of public shares. They're both around twelve thousand pieces.
How, uh, how much time does the sheriff spend in the area?
We're hoping he's going to get around and just cruise the road. So make his first, the dust asking into the government, leaving four o'clock in the morning on some shifts. Just so the people that are out, that are, tend to be seeing him.
So controlling and speed.
We're going to, is that, is that number, how, how, said we're going to get?
Four, four hours.
Four, we're doing four hours a week now. We'll leave this on here. First, please, Chris.
Lee, I understand the sheriff is, we can give him a certain amount of notice if we were no longer to meet him. Is that correct? We didn't sign like an annual contract. It was like sixty days' notice or thirty days or something like that. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's written in the contract we have that we can get forty days' notice. And if there doesn't have to be a reason, we can just decide to end it. So, um, the select board wanted to make sure we got proper feedback on whether the wheelchair is needed and whether to continue or not.
So what did you say, the sheriff has been following four hours? We have to get him back here?
He's been here since November. He's here four hours a week and he varies the day of week he's here and the time of day that he's here. He's usually here for, he's here for a four-hour block. We get charged sixty dollars an hour and sixty cents a mile for travel. And we pay if he needs to go to court to follow up on any traffic citations that he issues. We've spent year-to-date thirty-six hundred dollars for his services and we have received fourteen hundred dollars in fines that he has issued.
Peter?
As someone who lives right on the main drag, I can say that it makes a great big difference to have sheriff here periodically and he's slowing down the general flow of traffic. And I certainly appreciate it.
I just wondered what, what does the sheriff's department, I mean, the sheriff's department has part in traffic.
Will it be the same authority as the state?
The same as the state.
And residents request, uh, where the sheriff spends his time?
Can you get a hold of, of the select board to that? Steer them.
Mark?
Also, if we, the, uh, the fines, we don't know exactly what all the amount is because if it's in fifty mile an hour zone, we won't get the information until November because that's a different category. I forget why it's called that, but, um, so anyway, we did, we'll get more money back in November.
It's, it's, ticket is issued on the state, I believe, a lot of, takes long, it's going to be.
Yeah. Hi, um, I would like to know who the sheriff is? And, um, how is, um, I know that we get control by the state police. So what, what's the arrangement?
Well, we used to contract with the state police for coverage. You get their general coverage free of charge, it's not much. We used to contract for so many hours a month. But they became short-handed and couldn't do it anymore. We went basically a year, year and a half without any coverage. We came, we started getting complaints about speeders and stuff. Especially with paving the road, we noticed we're going to become more problem. Because people are, they slow down the bad thing. So we hired the sheriff. He's a little more expensive than the state police for, yes, but. Better on the option now.
The other question was, the sheriff is the Win, is the Windsor County?
He's the Windsor County sheriff.
So their headquarters is?
Wicker.
In Wicker.
Once the sheriff is doing speed control, is he required to be on the state roadway? Can he be in a private parking area or how does that work exactly? Where he can position?
Anywhere he gets permission to be.
Anywhere he has permissions. Private work, town.
Paul, we, the one thing that this select board has made very positive with dealing with the sheriff is that we do not want to get the reputation that the town is in over as a speed trap. So we have told the sheriff that we want him clearly visible. We don't want him hiding in bushes and tucking himself in corners so he can write more tickets. That is not what this board is about. We are here to help reduce the speed and we want him visible in the town stuff. So we want him parked so that even if somebody's not speeding, when they go by, they will notice that there is a sheriff in this town. We have no idea when he's going to be here or anything, but he is to be visible. That is the, that is the purpose of this town. Thank you.
You don't have to hide in the bushes in this village. You have to park in front of John Davidson's house. In the hill and the curves, right in plain sight, if you're going too fast, you're going to jail because he's got your dead mass. My friend Bruce Orkin plows out a spot right there for him. So no matter what the weather is, he can, he can park right there in plain sight. And if you're going too fast and you go by this place and over this hill, you're cooked. And same with coming up from Reynolds. He's right in plain sight and if you're going too fast, you're going to get arrested. Because that's, it's a perfect spot. And he's, he's not hiding, he's right there in plain sight. So, uh, and the word, the word is out on the street, it's all over that there is, is a little, little bit of law enforcement in Andover. So mind your business.
I'm sure none of this room has had any problems.
And it is working. It is working.
Is it always the same person?
Yes.
It's one sheriff, it's our fine.
Can I ask, I don't know where these people live that he was talking about where. I haven't seen the sheriff either where he, I, I'm just curious to hear.
Yeah, so, so Hank referenced a, a spot by John Davidson's farm. So it's the, the older barn and house opposite, right here in the village.
Oh, in the village, okay, yeah.
Past Hyler's place and then the next spot is a barn on that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, if you're going to Chester and he tucks in by the barn, I think, doesn't he, Hank? Sort of in there, but on that side.
Yes.
Except for the little churchyard, it's got the same effect.
Other questions on the budget for, uh, for the select board, Hank?
I don't know if this is the proper time because we haven't heard that, how we're going to spend the surplus. But we spent a lot of, I mean, that's, we get the municipal budget up there. That's, that takes care of the cemetery, uh, kind of. And we spent a lot of money last year.
That's our weight, that's our weight.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, our weight.
Makes a recap, we have eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred one seventy-five for expenses, municipal taxes are going to cover seven hundred fifty-two of that. Other income funds, seven hundred one thirty-five. So we got budgeted. And the total expenditures is, we got the eight hundred eighty-seven. Proposed votes. The part, half of the surplus from the twenty, from this year's, this, last year's fiscal year to the highway bridge fund and the other half, the capital investment fund. That's one vote we're looking for. And then to approve the expense budget of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred one seventy-five in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the year coming up.
Great, would you leave that on the screen, Matt? Other questions for Chris or the select board?
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify something about the sheriff. Because in the past, the sheriff and the state troopers have only enforced, uh, speed limits right here in town where this is where the greatest danger is because of the trucks coming in and out and because the school bus stops there. But we've asked the sheriff this time to spend half of the time in the center of town because that's where the greatest safety risk is. But the other half of the time on other roads of the town. That's both for, you know, just basic safety and security. So there's, uh, uh, law enforcement presence throughout the town. But also because I think a lot of us who don't live right in the center of town also have complaints about speeders on our roads. And this way, it, it gives at least a chance that, uh, the speeders on your road will also get a ticket.
Yes.
I have a question. However, most of the dirt roads in Andover are not posted. Does that mean that the sheriff can't do anything for the people who are speeding down the road or driving too fast for the conditions? When there's a lot of ice on the road and pedestrians are trying to walk on the side of the road?
What, what is this, what is the speeding?
If it's unpulsed, then it's fifty miles.
Yeah, technically it's fifty miles an hour, it's not pulsing.
So the roads, I'd say still can drive, he can't do anything.
He can do something because we had people, we were, we've already had someone who got a ticket for like over fifty miles an hour on a road that you wouldn't think someone could.
Because of the road.
Over fifty miles.
My understanding is that residents of a road can petition the town board for a speed limit. You ready?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I thought the, uh, is it the DOT that makes the regulations for the speed limits? And the town can't change them? If the state decides the speed limit should be X, that's the speed limit that can be changed by the town. Unless, unless they, if the state did something, we're not going to change it.
We can't change the state roads, we can't change the limit. The town, the town roads, if they're petitioned by the people, can be, do, do a speed study and jump through all the books which you can get a speed sign for.
Dave? Andover Bridge Road has a speed limit on it simply because my wife initiated the, all the state requirements to change the speed limit.
And if it had been, if it had been unlimited?
It was fifty miles an hour, we got a couple of rollovers and, uh, animals getting rolled, so we got things to change.
Yeah, Gordon?
There's a provision in the state statute which permits law enforcement to issue citations in the absence of a posted limit and notwithstanding the maximum limits. That's why I opposed the speed sign on Andover Ridge. Because even the speed sign limiting it to thirty miles an hour could be used as a defense that certain portions there that they were doing the speed limit. When in fact, the conditions were such that they should have been issued the citation. So there's already a state statute on the books which law enforcement can use to enforce speed limits that don't amount to the max as posted. Depending on what road you're on.
One, one comment then, then Hank. Uh, I just want to focus you back on what Maddy said. The additional law enforcement concerns of the sheriff really are, might go unnoticed if we're just thinking about speed limits. And I think our constable could probably talk about, uh, any number of times when issues have occurred in the town and he's either been called out or has had to say, no, I can't respond, uh, because I'm not really qualified or empowered to respond to things like disputes between neighbors, domestic disputes, invasions of property, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there are other matters beyond, uh, you know, speed limits that are, are important. Uh, Hank?
Is this the proper time to talk about the expenditure of the surplus?
Well, we, we're going to deal with that in article, uh, number eight. So this is the proper time.
You're already giving half of it, you're going to give it all away right there.
Well, I guess that's, I guess that's the answer then. So this is the time to talk about these two issues.
Well, I'd like to modify that a little bit if we could. At this time, one of us proper.
So we make some motion, Hank, we make a special motion. And you, so you need to say it tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday.
Well, what I'm looking for is some money put into the cemetery, more money put into the cemetery fund. Because, you know, a lot of the surplus. Because we're going to have to do some more work in the cemeteries. And I'd like to get a, I think some of that money instead of dumping it all in the roads. Put a little bit of it, squirrel some of the, some of it into the cemetery fund in respect for the, for the dead and protection of these two-hundred-year-old headstones in these cemeteries. Took here in the trees and two cemeteries and it was very expensive. And depleted what money I had in the, in the fund, but it's not going to get replaced by, by burials. Because it's a little town. So if we could just take a little bit of that money and increase what the town puts into the cemetery fund. So that it'll, it'll be built up instead of, this, right now, it's, it's pretty well depleted. And we're going to have to, this summer, we're going to get some prices. You're going to have to put a fence around a, a new part of the East Hill Cemetery. And we don't have to do it all at once, but if we could put a little, because it's, we've still got room, but eventually, we're going to have to move back there and going to have to put a fence around it. And it's going to amount to about two hundred feet of, figure four-foot chain link fence with a people gate on the far end and a ten-foot gate to get equipment in from the side because you, you can't get much through the old cemetery because it's pretty narrow. So if we could take some of that surplus and funnel some of that into the cemetery fund a little at a time so that when we have to do this work, it's not going to be a big sticker shot.
I think, I, I, I hear you. I think we have to move the article number down.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I just want a clarification because I know the highway fund and the capital equipment fund are special funds and accumulate money. Is the cemetery a line item budget per year or is there a cemetery fund?
Question is, is the cemetery a line item budget or?
It's a line item.
It's a line item, so there's a fund that exists. We'd have to create a fund.
There is a fund.
There is.
There is a fund, it's added to it, there's a line, line item to add to it every year.
Oh, there is.
It's set up exactly like you have the equipment fund in the highway.
That's what I wanted.
So, and Hank, you have a, it sounds like you have a list of things which we need and I don't think anybody would argue that that's appropriate. Is there a, is there a dollar figure that you have in your head?
Well, now, because they have to get prices and I have to get them. At least two bids on everything. And when we did that, we cleaned up those trees, I got three.
I'm, I'm going to suggest that the, the way to do, the way to do this, if you've got to vote these issues, I think you've got to get with the select board and propose some amendments, to use that term loosely, to the budget because I think the voters want to see the cemetery.
Now, but doesn't the town now put money in the cemetery fund?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm requesting is that get increased a little bit, not a lot, but enough to cover, you know, so when we do these other jobs, it's not going to be a big sticker shot. It's like the squirrel is going to change a few nuts.
I saw Ray's, Ray's hand up back there.
Uh, yes, uh, if the chair, I mean, you pretty much directed the question, uh, I'm interested in whether Hank is talking about five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or, or exactly how much, makes a difference.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's going to be, be minimal because it's not asking for the job to be done all at once. But you've been putting a little bit more than you've been putting in there every year in the cemetery funds because we're going to have to do some work with these cemeteries.
Reyno is our former section.
Yeah, I think, sir, to the embarrassment of the town, if you look at the, uh, Old Town Cemetery and the deterioration of the stones, there's, a lot of them can't be re, uh, restored anymore. But there are some, some of the original pillars here, their stones are pretty bad shape. They really need a lot of cleaning and restoration.
Uh, Gene, and then Paul.
Hi, the proper way is to really approach the select board with what will be needed so that the select board can consider an increase to the funds that are put into the cemetery. And, and that's where it belongs. And, and I, we'll be starting to do the next year's budget pretty soon, too. By before July, or is that this one? So, um, it, it seems to me that that's, that's the appropriate value as opposed to taking it out of surplus. So, it seems to me that that's the appropriate value, as opposed to taking it out of surplus, to have it budgeted properly. And the Select Board needs to understand what the future plan is, and what the costs are, so that they can budget appropriately.
Paul.
Well, sir.
Yeah, I was going to actually clarify what Jean said, when she's pointing out that Frank, Hank, you initially asked for money to be taken from the surplus, and now we've been discussing money to be added to the annual budget into the fund. So, we have to find where you'd like the money to come from, because you've asked for two different sources of funding, you've asked for surplus transfer, and also a line item budget increase. So, what is your, going back to our original question, are you sure the money comes out of the surplus for the cemetery from this year?
So, what I'd like to suggest is we have an ad before the vote, is what I want to do, and thank you, Hank, for bringing that up. But I want to suggest that it's okay, is that I ask the body to, by a show of hands, to indicate your desire for our sexton to work with the Select Board, to establish an appropriate budgetary number, so that we can take care of our cemeteries.
For next year.
For this coming, for the future, right? We're looking into the future. So, by a show of hands, I'd like to ask you to affirm that you would like our sexton to do this. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Great, thanks very much. Do you have more?
We're done.
No, we just need a minute.
Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Chris, very much. So, we need, as Chris said, we need two votes here. So, vote number one.
Of course, I'm monitoring.
Yes, Joe.
We're still under Article Six.
Yes, we are.
And at this point, they're not asking for a vote on the budget.
Right.
Article Seven, which is a different issue. And the proposal to use the surplus is under Article Eight, which is the proper way to apportion that and vote on it.
Okay, so that's not just a lot of mahogany, but what he just said was that we're going to come back to this vote, but we're going to go back to the warning here, and deal with Article Seven, which will require a little bit of explanation input from the Board. This is Article Seven, see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars to support something called the Collaborative. And so, I turn this over to the Select Board to say a few words, to kind of clue you in on what we're talking about.
Okay, so usually...
Can you all hear that?
Can you hear me? I have soft voice, so I'll have to... I don't think standing up is going to be much of a difference, especially because I'm not that tall. So, the situation here is, we, the Select Board gets a lot of requests from local organizations asking us to put your tax dollars to work for their organization. The Select Board declined the Collaborative's request, and they answered that by petitioning to have it discussed here at town meeting. So, I think the first thing we should do is see if there's anyone from the Collaborative here to speak.
Yes, there is. Hi. Would you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Devin. I'm one of the youth programmers at the Collaborative. So, I just, first of all, thank you for letting us come to your town meeting today. So, I'm just going to explain some of the stuff we've done in the past. We haven't really worked with Andover, we've more worked with Chester. But we are offering a summer camp open to you guys. It's for supporting working families. It's just like a nice safe place for your youth to come.
The body would like you to come to the front and speak. Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
You want to use the vote?
As I was saying, our summer camp is open for the youth. It's just a nice place where we support working families, for you guys to come, and just have your youth have a safe place during the day. Camp starts July sixth, and runs till August fourteenth. We really recommend that the middle schoolers join our IEL program. It's a youth-engaged learning leadership for sixth through eighth grades, so they would actually be learning a lot of leadership skills, helping with the younger kids from K through fifth. We have scholarships open for you guys, if anyone needs a scholarship during camp. In the past, we have helped out with parenting classes in Chester, which is also open to you guys as residents. Victoria Sillsby has done a tobacco educational class in the past for your fifth and sixth graders. We've also helped funded your student assistant professional in the past, and we've worked with your guys' Chester Police. So, mostly, I just run a lot of youth programs, and our mentoring program. It's just a nice, really safe place for you guys to have a safe place for the kids. We really want the kids to feel valued, and that they have some importance in the community. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions, or, bro?
Where is the camp? The camp is at Floodbrook, which is up in Londonderry. It's about fifteen minutes from you guys.
Yeah, Gene.
Where would the seven hundred and fifty dollars go? To support, to the scholarships, or to the programs they can?
I would actually have, I can give you Mary Ann's information. I don't have the answer right now for you. She didn't give me the answer. But I can give you information, you can easily email her.
Other, yeah, Paul, are you going to establish one vote, or are you doing?
Yes. We're on our twenty-year anniversary.
Yeah, Fran.
What is the cost to use the HPM for?
Again, I'd have to give you Mary Ann's information. I know that it's usually for after-school, it's fifty-five dollars a day for K through fifth, and then thirty dollars for sixth through eighth, so I'm basing camp as about that same.
The camp is a week?
Yeah, no, it's all summer, it's a week, all summer.
Do you know probably what other towns in the area are looking to organize, any?
Manchester, Londonderry area, a lot of local towns. I think it's called Up the Mountain that helps us out. I know you guys heard about Refuse to Use. Sadly, we don't have a partner with Up the Mountain for us to do that here. Any other questions?
Joan?
Yeah, Matt?
Can I just say something?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Matt.
I just want to explain why the Select Board didn't vote to give the seven hundred and fifty dollars. It is our understanding that the vast majority of the programming done by the Collaborative is out of the Floodbrook School, which no child in Andover attends. Their camp is also out of Floodbrook School, and certainly, anyone could go, but you pay to go there. So, and not, it doesn't seem like a lot of kids go to that camp from Andover, and certainly, my children's experience there was not very good. So, but I think the main thing is, is the Collaborative is very closely tied with Floodbrook School, obviously. Our kids go to Chester, Andover, where they, there's...
An after-school program.
Right.
They have their own after-school program, not associated.
They also have their own drug, alcohol, and tobacco programs, which run by the Chester Police Department. So, we felt that these funds would mostly go to help families in the Floodbrook School District.
So, the way this, oh, yeah.
Devin, it's my understanding that some Andover kids have been going to the camps and have received the scholarships, which covers, as far as I know, a big portion of the cost of the camp. I, and for that reason, it seems like something that we could support.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead.
The students from Chester, Andover, go to the summer camp in London. We did that last year, because there's a program through our supervisory union. Those kids can go there.
Other comments? Yeah.
The North Shubin, are we, is this seven hundred and fifty dollars up or down? Or kind of...
The way it would work is that we would need a motion to vote that up or down.
So, we couldn't say, "Huh."
Joe, can we amend the motion after we voted up or down?
You can make the motion, you would accept the motion to act on the article, and then someone can offer an amendment to the motion. It has the proper way to do that. So, if someone were to move to vote the article as perjured, to raise an appropriate settlement of seventy, a fifty dollars, a second person could move to amend that motion to do three hundred dollars.
After the motion, instead of his vote?
Put to the floor.
Okay. Oh, it has to be, it has to be made, seconded, and voted on?
By now, made and seconded.
And seconded, okay.
Discuss.
Thanks, sir. The other thing, just I'll step in the commentary role here. The other thing that is possible, I've known of the Collaborative for many years, and they do much very, very good and valuable work. And they are, as Matty reminded us, you are a 501(c)(3). And so, donations can be made by taxpayers to them. Paul?
It's like that, let's see, the new budget, the new five hundred dollar donation, are there county youth services? Is that a similar organization, similar function?
No, it is not a similar organization. And I think I know what they do off the top of my head, but I would much prefer to give that up and make sure.
So, the Select Board has approved the money?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the question from Paul was Windsor County Youth Services is funded by you to the two hundred and five hundred dollars. And if people are interested in what they do, that will have to get back to you. Other questions? Can I have your question?
Question, the source of the seven hundred and fifty dollars, would that be coming out of the current year's surplus?
No, well, that's your tax.
Are any surplus coming next year?
No, in your tax dollars.
Would you increase the tax rates?
It would be an additional, it would be an additional line item in the appropriation section of the budget. And it currently is not, because the Board chose not to add it.
Gene.
Andover is a really generous town, and if you look on Page Seventeen, you see all of the different areas that we contribute a significant amount of money. It's my opinion that we should support our Select Board's decision, I've done the research on it, and ensure that some members to donate to the Collaborative, as you say, to fund up and see if they can serve the community.
Did everybody hear that? A suggestion that we support the Select Board, but remember that this organization does do the wonderful work, and folks can make donations. I think I would like to, you know...
I'd like to make a motion that we vote to accept donating the seven hundred and fifty dollars, or not.
Okay, so what you, what we need now is a motion. I think you can frame the motion how you would like to, or you suggesting that you would like to not, that you would like to not donate the seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Right, that is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Monitor, I would caution us to frame the motion in the negative, because it requires a yes vote to adopt the negative. So, the best way to field the motion is to offer a motion to accept and vote to raise an appropriate amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Then, the motion, the motion will be voted either up or down, and if it's approved, we very praise seven hundred and fifty. If it is not approved, we do not raise the seven hundred and fifty.
So, what Joe is, Joe is our resident parliamentarian, so what he's suggesting is that we get an affirmative motion, so someone who's willing to make the motion, that we, the town, contribute seven hundred and fifty dollars to this organization, we get a second, and then we simply have a yay or a nay vote. Is that all, is clear as mud? All right. So, do we have someone who's willing to make a positive motion?
How about a motion that we vote to accept donating seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'd like to amend that motion. Do I amend it, or second it?
It has to be seconded, if you're going to amend. Do we have a second to Chris's, all right? Motion is made, seconded, discussion.
I would agree, amend this motion to two hundred and fifty dollars.
Paul has made a motion that we might amend this motion to two hundred and fifty dollars, rather than the seven hundred and fifty is requested. Do we have a second? Fran? Your second. Okay, now, we've just got fun, so, Joe, walk us through this.
We vote for it. The vote for for you is on the amendment, on the amendment.
Okay, so we vote on Paul's amendment first?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, if that is accepted, the original motion becomes not seven fifty, it becomes two hundred.
Okay. Y'all follow on this? This is, we're earning our stripes here. So, there's a motion made by Paul, a seconded by Fran, to amend the request to two hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
So, I think that motion does not carry, that's clear. So, Joe, we revert now to voting on the original motion, which was made by Chris and seconded by our friend.
Mark.
Mark. So, the motion on the floor is, once again, as we're listening to our parliamentarian, it is a positive motion to contribute from the town budget, seven hundred and fifty dollars to the Collaborative. It has been seconded, yes.
It's going to be clear, it is not in the town budget as this budget is driven. This seven hundred and fifty dollars is additional to the town budget. It is not in the town.
So, it'd be an additional tax assessment.
Correct.
I think the body has made their wishes fairly clear. So, the motion has been made and seconded to make this donation. And so, call in the question. All right, so, so that means that when you vote, you are deciding whether you want this money to go to the Collaborative. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay?
Nay.
The motion carries. Right?
No.
No, no, no. The motion was denied.
Yes. I'm not confused at all. Thank you all for your patience. So, Article Number Eight, to see if the town will authorize the Select Board to distribute the surplus and subscribe to Article Six. And then, we're back to the two votes that are requested by your Select Board. So, questions?
I'm still moving.
Okay. Make a motion, make a motion.
I move that we deposit half the surplus from the, uh... Wait a minute.
I was just putting this back up. This tells you what the surplus is, and what the Board is recommending, just so you would...
That, we remove the surplus of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents, split between the Highway Bridge Fund and the Capital Equipment Fund.
Bonnie has moved. Do we have a second? Joe has seconded.
Can this be amended?
Joe, can this be amended?
It can be.
It can, yes, yeah.
Like, you may offer an amendment to the motion being...
Hank, do you want to amend this motion to put some money into the cemetery fund for the surplus?
Hank? The question from Paul was, do you want to amend this motion to move some of the surplus into the cemetery fund?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
How much?
Not a large amount, but...
Give a number.
Say, like, four thousand dollars. Because it's not going to, we don't want to put that fence up. That's in the future, because we still have room in the Hill Cemetery, both cemeteries, and we won't have to use the new property for a while, but we're going to get it ready.
All right, let's, let's, Ray, Fran, and Hank.
I move that ten percent of the surplus go to the cemetery fund, and the remainder be evenly split as proposed.
Second, no second. Okay, Joe, hold on.
We have an amendment for the original motion that is pending, because that has been seconded, as I understand.
Yes, let's make it seconded. Ray made a... Ray made an amendment to put 10%.
So now we have two amendments. If Paul would agree to withdraw his motion, then we would only need to deal with one amendment.
Well, I guess the question is...
I wanted to make a change. No, it was a discussion. I'm questioning what is right.
Okay, so we do have a motion which has been seconded. I don't, who seconded raised? Okay, Paul seconded raised amendment. So you're all clear now that we're, the amendment that Ray made was to move 10% of the surplus into the cemetery budget and is been seconded by Paul. Questions, discussion?
Did we not have a raise of hands to say what the town should go to the select board and put in next year as a budget?
For the budget, not for the fund.
For what?
For the cemetery budget, annual budget amount, not for the fund.
But you're, Jill, you are correct that I was trying to forestall this very eventuality that I must have succeeded. Which is, it's the way democracy works, right? Yeah, Barry?
As a previous member of the board, I strongly...
Look how he says it.
I strongly disagree with taking the money out of the surplus. I feel that if the cemetery fund would like more money, they should come to the Board of Selectmen, they should give us their proposals of the expenses that they're going to have. And I'm sure this Board of Selectmen will work with the Cemetery Commission. I strongly believe that is how it should work and it should not come out of the surplus.
Paul?
My comment to that is that perhaps the amount of money that would be available to the cemetery fund from the surplus distribution would be more than they could accumulate in perhaps five or six years of annual money increases. So if there's a large amount of work that needs to be done, this may be a good way to jumpstart it.
Yeah, Hank, briefly.
This is a one-time deal because we can do it the way Barry suggests. But does it make any difference what pile of money you take it out of? Because if it's in the general fund, it's not in the surplus. So if it's in the surplus this year, we can still use the money and next year we'll do it the other way and the money won't be in the surplus. So what's the difference? There's no difference whatsoever. It's still the taxpayers' money.
Chris, directly from arms, like, they've done the budget, they've worked on it. You can take 10% out. That's going to change the whole, the whole budget. Your budget would be bigger in the cemetery fund, but everybody's taxes are going to have to change to make up for the surplus there to put in the budget. No? That's just...
That's an existing statute, right? Instead of breaking it into two pieces, they break it into three pieces.
But Hank can just come to the board with proposals, with bids, so we know the exact numbers. Instead of tying himself into the $4,000, what if it's 45? Right, and then he can actually come with the exact amount of money.
And I remind the body that I did encourage you by Joe Hans to encourage Hank to support his very appropriate request to make sure that we have our, we have totally funded care for our cemeteries.
Yeah, it's my, it's not my intention to open a can of worms, but with my understanding that Hank seems to say that we were needing, he needed more money than we could handle. And if he goes with the budget, the amount of money, it's a much smaller amount of money this year than it would be if we gave him $4,000 this year. He doesn't seem to care whether he needs it this year or next year, so I would be willing to withdraw the amendment from the motion. Go back, go rate, withdraw the amendment.
So Ray, are you willing to withdraw the motion or do you want to keep it out there? Did you hear all of that? Okay. Really? No pressure.
All I'm thinking about is sooner or later, we're all going to be there.
True that.
We spent a lot of money last year taking care of the two major cemeteries. There's two more that need some attention. Not quite as serious as the, he's still in the Hill Cemetery, which was very expensive, but now there's no, half their trees hanging over headstones. And some of these stones are well over 200 years old and they're privately owned. There's no insurance to take care of those trees. And gravity never sleeps. So have a little respect and spend a couple of bucks and get, take care of the trees that are threatening these 200-year-old stones and get it taken care of. Because who's going to fix them? Who wants to go into a cemetery and see a bunch of stones all broke up by, from trees because nobody took care of it? And those two more, those two cemeteries, they still have to, I haven't even looked at the Old Simonsville Cemetery. And even though we're not burying anybody there anymore, there's still, there's still some poor souls there and nobody's taking care of their stones. So that doesn't make any difference where, what pile of money just comes. It's going to be addressed this summer, we're going to take care of the other two cemeteries. See what we can do to save those stones. You get the money and you just, it's not going to do you any good if you're sitting on it.
And voters agree with you by Joe Hans, they affirm that, so I think we have a plan.
Can I make a motion? If we take 5% of that money and put it in the cemetery fund, we've got to have something because we're going to have to do some more work. And like I said, gravity never sleeps.
Well, you can make a motion.
You snooze, you lose.
You can make a motion. Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion and we take 5% of that surplus and put it in the cemetery fund. And it'd only be for this year. And next year, what they'll do is a modified, be what we'd like for a budget to keep these cemeteries up.
All right, motion has been made, is there a second? Seconded. Paul has seconded. Discussion.
This is an amendment to the original motion.
This is an amendment to the original motion. Can we do it in this order?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Ray?
Hank has talked about the need for the, these repairs, which I think are necessary, and the respect for those who die. But I think even for those who are living, this is part of the heritage of our town. And it is part of the character of our town is to have these old cemeteries with 19th century, 18th century graves. It's, it's a preservation of our history. I certainly would like to see those old stones standing and not knocked down by a falling tree limb.
Awesome. So my understanding is the amendment to the proposal is 5% of the surplus is to the Cemetery Commission. And that would provide money for this year. And then it was an understanding that Hank would then come to the board for money for next year.
Right.
If needed.
Right. Yeah, Matt?
I'd like to ask for some explanation. Can you hear me or do I need to...
Can you, can you?
So, I want to give you a little background. Mr. Mountie did appear in front of the select board in the past year, I don't think, I think it might be this, don't hold me to what the fiscal year was, asking for additional funds to do tree work on the East Hill Cemetery, which the select board approved. Because we, like you, do want to take care of our cemeteries. However, there are issues with the amount of money being spent on cemeteries. If Mr. Mountie would like to make that into a public discussion with the whole town, I am happy to do that. But I have concerns about how things are being spent on cemeteries. I have absolutely no problem with what's being done, but I do have a problem with contractor who has tripled their rates in the past year or so. And there's also some questions among the, my fellow select board members about whether the work is being performed as we expect it would be. I really see this motion as a, as an attempt to make an end run around the select board and our financial responsibilities to the town. And so I urge you to vote no.
I would like to move us along. I think we've heard from all the stakeholders. So at this point, my understanding, keep me on track here, Joe, is that we're voting on a, on an amendment to take 5% of the surplus and apply it to cemeteries. And that motion was made and seconded. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
I do not think the amendment carried. Are you comfortable with that ruling from me?
Yep.
Let us move on then. Oh, great, okay, so we are, thank you. We are at Article eight on your agenda, to see if the town will authorize the select board to distribute the surplus as described in Article six. So now we're back to these two requested votes. And I believe Bonnie made a motion, which was seconded. Do you want to say that again? I think you should say that again, Bonnie, just because it's clear for the voters.
Okay, we're agreed, we're looking to agree to take our surplus of $39,162.17 and split it between the highway bridge fund and the capital equipment fund.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The motion carries. Thank you all so much for your patience. Article number nine, to see if the town will raise an appropriate, an appropriate sum of money to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town. I believe this is simply you affirming your select board's power to pay the town's bills going forward. Any other explanation on that that we need?
Mr. Moderator?
Joe?
I would make a motion that we, the town raised $887,801.75 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the town.
I'll second that.
Did everyone hear Joe's motion? And Barry's second? We're voting on this. There being a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The motion carries. But finally, on to Article nine, do any other non-binding business proper to be done at this meeting, including any discussions about Green Mountain Union District budget, which will be put to the voters on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020? We wanted to, some debate about whether to have this discussion at the end of the meeting or at the beginning, but it seemed appropriate since we, the vote cannot happen here, to have this discussion here. So I believe Joe has a few things to say. Are there questions? I'd like to move us along fairly, if we can, Barry?
Mr. Moderator, I would like this time, before we get into the school budget, the select board would like Jacque Harvey to come up and to explain about the Emerald Ash Bor and everything that this town, the responsibility that we have.
Great.
And now is the time for Jacque to come up.
Yeah, thanks. Jacque, do you want the mic?
I don't know. You guys have it.
Yeah, you should have it.
I don't know.
You're loud.
Thanks, Jacque. Good morning. My name's Jacque, Jacque Harvey. I'm a worser. I work for private landowners and I also work for a group called First Detectors, which is a group of volunteers working with the State of Vermont UVM Extension Service. And we're very concerned in regard to a number of insects, pests, other pests, and in regard to trees and other invasives. One of the major issues we're having now, that you might have heard about, is the Emerald Ash Bor. The Emerald Ash Bor has decimated ash throughout the Midwest. It started about early 2000 in Michigan and Wisconsin. And it's basically destroyed about 99% of all ash trees. That includes white ash, which we have here, green and black ash, which are not as prevalent in our area. The situation is such that our ash trees are going to die in the course of the next 20 years. It's going to be similar to the same issues we had with Dutch elm disease and chestnut. And it's going to be brought to us very soon. There's an outbreak right now in the town of London area, and we're going to have to deal with the cost and the management of getting those trees removed and preventing it to spread further into our forests and our public lands and our private roads and our private properties. The larvae will destroy about 100% of trees in the next five to 10 years. We haven't got it yet, but it's coming. And when they die, these ash trees die, they are very hazardous. They don't just fall down, they break apart, they die slowly, and the trees are very hazardous to move. The cost of that is going to have to be put on the town and primarily on the town road crew or private individuals interested enough to try to remove these before they become a hazard. The town has the responsibility to make sure that our right of ways are safe for transportation and load to get around, and it's going to be a heavy burden on them as well as all of us. There are ways that some of our ash trees can be protected with insecticides. If we have noted or concerned about special trees, we can provide some way to help protect them, but it isn't cheap. And the cost of cleaning up after all, the deadfall is not very cheap. A lot of the methods, we have to dispose of the wood, it has to be ground up, chipped, and gotten rid of in a way that's appropriate so it won't spread the legs and the eggs and larvae into the next trees that come by. So there's, we're going to have to work with adjacent landowners, obviously Green Mountain Power, because they have a lot of lines that run along our road sides. Their trees are going to be better hazard to our roads or to other people's property will have to be taken care of by Green Mountain Power. But the town of London area is going to have to take care of the rest that fall into our right of ways. Right now, we have epidemics up in near Berry, we have it up in Isle of Mont, we have it down in Searsburg and Reedspur, and we have an outbreak that's very prominent up near Berry and Plainfield. So it's not an isolated situation, as well as Bristol, New Orleans. We have found it in London area, so it's just a matter of time and it's going to encompass us here as well.
Jacque, question, how does the, how does the layperson know if a tree's been infected?
We have, First Detectors, as well as UVM, have put out a number of different pamphlets and literature in regard to EAB, and I brought a bunch, they're out there on the table. And you can welcome to take as many as you want, or you can welcome to call me. I can come over and look if you have a problem tree you think might have it, I don't mind coming and looking at it. There's methods that we can look over the trees to determine whether it might have been infected. So I'd like to make myself available. The other thing that we're going to have to do is get prepared and understand that if we do have it, we're going to have to determine where those problem areas are. I worked with a select board this last year, and I walked 1.6 miles of road, Marshall Road where I live, and I found 246 ash trees.
Infected?
Not yet. They could well be in the near future. But what it did determine is that there's a lot of trees that had the possibility of being a real danger. They were either going to fall in our lane, in our town roads, onto GMP's power lines, or on other adjacent landowners' properties. And so we're all going to be in... And so we're all going to be in this together. Adjacent landowners can help by trying to remove some that might be a risk to fall on our town roads if they can, and as well as the town's responsibility to take care of the cleanup if they do fall on our town highways. So what have...
Another question about taking out potentially infected trees or trees that aren't yet infected. What's the market value or the market valuation on an ash tree that doesn't seem to be infected but that you're taking out pro lactic?
What we're going to try to do is set a priority for these trees. If the tree's hanging over a line, its power line, that's going to be the responsibility of GMP. If it's hanging over our roads, it's going to be our responsibility to remove it if it happens to fall on the road. The return on that wood is negligible.
Yeah.
It's firewood. We'll leave it on the side road for anybody to pick up and salvage as they want. If it's a prized tree that somebody wants to save, it's going to be something that either the town incurs a cost to protect it with insecticide, or if an individual wants it in their own home, they're going to have to reach out to an arbitrator to figure out a method to save it. I don't want to come up with a really good dollar figure, but it ain't cheap.
Jesse.
How committed is Green Mountain Power to get ahead of the curve?
They're already behind. They're working on this method that I mentioned to take down trees that hang over their lines. So if we have a line on your east side of the road, they'll take those down, but they're not going to bother ones on the west side, and they're just hoping it won't reach. So they're working up in Berry right now, trying to get ahead of it, but with the way the infection rates go, and you're never going to catch up.
Just to make sure that I'm saying this properly. If we take down the dangerous trees now, we can burn it. If we wait until after they're infected, then there are other things that are cost to count more to take care of it.
Exactly.
So that's what I mean. A little bit of prevention, yeah, it's really a sad thing to see trees go, but if they're going to go anyway, we're looking at a lot more money to take care of it later than to take care of it now.
Exactly.
Am I right?
Yeah. Brooke and then Hank.
So my question is, as a landowner, do you want us to scout our property for any ash trees that are within a certain distance of the road, or what's your recommendation?
Well, what I propose to the town select board, and as well as all of you here today, is if we could get some volunteers to walk a segment of their road, count what they've got for ash trees through a certain mileage factor, and we're going to plot these and put them on some type of map or to determine from a roadside appraisal whether they are going to be specifically dangerous to the power line, to our roads, or to homes or other businesses along that right of way. Now, a lot of those won't be a problem. Some of them are going to fall on adjacent landowners' land. Now, in that regard, it's going to be up to the neighborly kindness of that landowner to say, fine, just leave it. It's okay, whoever wants to salvage what they can is welcome to. If his trees happen to fall on the town right of way, it then becomes the town's responsibility. So it's going to take a lot of give and take from all facets of us to try to make this thing work out, and it's not going to be an easy task.
Hank.
This is kind of a question. Does that include the ones hanging over the cemetery?
We didn't get that out first.
We're really into an awful double standard right here. Depends on, is that discrimination against the maple trees and the yolk?
No, we've got an Asian ash bore, and we get rid of those too. So we've got one thing after another. Hopefully, they won't come to the maples right of way.
Yeah, Brooke.
Is there a committee working on it now, or that's your pitch right now?
That's my pitch right now. I need some help. So I put up a sign up sheet, so there's all the literature about EAB on the table back there. There's plenty of information, there's more. You can go to a number of different websites to find out how it might affect you or your town, or if you have property, forestry, anything you want to manage. It's going to be there to look over for anybody that's interested.
Yeah, Tricia.
Maybe I'm not understanding something, but I have a concern about a tree that ends up falling on a neighbor's property, and then it can, somebody can just come and get it and take care of it, and that's nice that they can have that wood, but we're probably not professionals at identifying whether it's infected or not, and how that's then taken care of, is that we may be taking an infected tree and transporting it somewhere else. So that, my concern is that maybe people shouldn't be moving the ash tree that's come down.
That's a very big problem, moving firewood from one location to another. If you happen to have an ash tree that has EAB, emerald ash bore, and it's infected, and we know it, and we determine that through seeing larvae galleries, or wood pecker marks, or a number of other items that you can show that it has it, those trees should be dealt with in a manner that we're not spreading it, that it gets chipped, disposed of, the wood gets either burned or taken to a depository where it can be utilized in a manner that's suitable so that it doesn't spread any farther. So this is going to become an association with a number of other groups. I've already spoken to people in Windham, and they're going to have the same issue. So what we're going to end up doing is towns are going to kind of join up together to find a place that can be a central haven for all this leftover wood debris. And then how that gets disposed of, we don't know. We don't know how much we're going to have. If we have tons and tons of it, it's either got to be chipped or burned, or cut and split and given away, or people in the town use it, but it doesn't get spread to the next town or the next state from that way.
Can you stay for lunch?
Yeah, I'll be here.
I would encourage folks to continue asking questions of Jacque and to sign up for...
Representative Martin said the new copy of the bill they're working on in the legislature to empower the tree wardens to have authority to say which tree gets cut, and maybe jumping through some hurdles, removing some hurdles to jump through so that the landowner can be more easily work with the tree warden to make this done speedily. So if you want to look at that, it's House Bill Number 673.
I plan on working with Alan, who's our tree warden, and Alan knows all the intricacies of it, but he and I both have pretty good backgrounds in trees and forestry, and if there's questions, please address them to myself and Alan, and we'll try to get some answers for you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Stick around. Yeah, I encourage you to talk to Jacque some more about that.
So we have four, can I have some of your copy?
Is it going to change?
Oh, okay, good.
Before we segue into the last portion, we kind of wrap up. I just saw Jacque mentioned the roadways in town, and that reminded me that I think we, as a group of citizens and voters, should just positively affirm the incredible work of our road crew this year. They just did an incredible job. I don't know, as you travel around, we don't want to be prejudiced against other towns, but sometimes, you know, the distinction is pretty great. You go over to towns like Weston, and you know, they're not quite on it, but we have a great road crew, so I guess we'd like to ask you to do that. Malcolm, don't take that back to Weston, you know? That stays here.
As a non-municipal manager, should you speak?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I'm Malcolm Hammond, I'm an employee of Senior Solutions, counts on aging. I thank you for supporting us in the appropriations that you voted on this morning. I do have a table out in the next room if you would like to pick up any information about our agency. We work with seniors 60 and older and some younger disabled adults, but I have brochures and items out there that I'd like you to take a look at, and I'll be around for a little bit if you have any questions for me, for our agency.
Thanks. Thank you, Malcolm. If you don't know, Senior Solutions does great, great work. Yeah, Paul.
I'm going to make some comments on 911 service.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, go for it.
I've kind of been casually following an issue regarding 911 emergency service now that we've all switched over to fiber optic telephones, and you're probably all familiar with your backup batteries that's in your house. Those batteries are only good for, as most people probably know, eight to 10, 12 hours, depending on how much you're using your phone. So for extended outages, if you're in an area where an outage is more than eight hours and your backup battery dies, you don't have, you have options, but they aren't very good options, especially if you have no cell service. So what I'm trying to do is make the citizens of Andover aware that if they know of any neighbors or friends of themselves who don't have cell service, and they don't have an emergency backup power system for their homes or for their limited electrical usage, that you are at risk of not being able to make a 911 emergency call. So the only options are, from VTEL, is to buy a very expensive battery out of your own pocket, which is around $1,000, might get to 24, 48 hours, 36 hours. And there are other towns that have been involved working, it's in the legislature right now, 911 commission is going to carry on about it. There hasn't been a good solution that's been put forward to provide for people who are out there that may just be completely incapable of communicating with 911 and an extended power outage. So if you don't have your own backup generator, and you don't have cell service where you live, just be aware and make your neighbors aware that after more than eight hours, they will not be able to make a 911 call. And if you're concerned about that, drop an email on the Andover 250 list. I can make you aware of when the legislature has been acting and discussing this. They just had a meeting on February 18th, testimony was received. I had to work that day, I wasn't able to sit in on it, but I believe the minutes of that are available. So just something to keep an eye on, and if you know if your neighbors are at risk in that area, just be aware.
Thanks, Paul. Other announcements, concerns, other business? This is the other business portion of our meeting as we move all the delivery towards lunch. Joe, would you like to talk about the Green Mountain budget? The reason that we moved things to the end is that there, I actually moderated the Green Mountain meeting this week, and I'm Chester, and I'm embarrassed to say it was the first time in about 17 years that I've been to that meeting, and it was really terrific. And you have an amazing group of folks who are trying to keep a lid on costs, trying to solve the problems of education today. So much of that work was done there, but Joe, would you like to just add to that conversation?
I would love to answer questions. I think what I'll start doing is, I will tell you that the Andover sends 26 children to the Chester Andover School. There are a couple that are homeschooled that also attend some of the programs at Chester Andover. We also send 16 children from grade seven through 12 to the high school, and those also, there are two homeschool children that are part of some of the programs that are being offered at the high school. Last night, or a couple nights' meeting ago, Jonathan was very good in moderating our annual meeting of the new Green Mountain Unified School District Board and the public. And we discussed the budget and the challenges that the board faced on coming up with a budget that was not too bad, if I may say that. The challenges we had were that we determined that due to some issues that were in the past, we had some deficits due to some of the cost overruns on, many of you may remember that Chester Andover a couple of years ago had a flood where the water main broke that went into the school. It flooded the furnace room, had all of the electricals in there. So the costs of that, most of the cost was covered by insurance, but we did have a cost over around of $160,000 or so thousand dollars that the school had to fund. That in addition to the new health insurance scheme that the state agreed to, you may remember that the state passed a legislation that said the NEA, Teachers Association, and the Mount Stevarts Association would negotiate for a health insurance coverage for school employees, and it was a long process. The end result was that they could not agree, and part of the legislation was that if there was no agreement, they would, each side would submit last best offer to an arbitrator, and the arbitrator would decide which proposal to pick. The arbitrator did pick the NEA's last best proposal, and the result was that health insurance costs for the district went up by about $265,000, in addition to which the normal insurance increase was 12.9%. So totally, our current budget that we voted and have submitted to the voters is $14 million. And is a 9% increase, and that is because about 5% of that increase is things that we could do absolutely nothing about. We have to pay for the deficits, we have to budget for the increased health insurance costs. And the board also chose to increase the offerings for the students, and we added some teachers, we added some programs that were, that we thought were an incentive for some of the tuition students that we expect to come from the closure of Black River High School. As you know, or you may know, that Ludlow voted last year to close the high school as of June this year, and the school population, about 140 students, would be tuitioned to wherever they want to go. The Ludlow and Mount Holly taxpayers would tuition their students and paid tuition to wherever they want to go. One of the reasons we wanted to increase these, the offerings and the permit, is because we wanted to ensure that those students looked at our school as a possible choice for coming to us. So the budget that I'm asking you to consider voting for is up by 9%. I will answer questions, I'll try to explain what the reasons for that large increase is, but I will tell you, on a personal level, I have looked at the increase, and my tax bill for last year was $3,200. My tax bill for this projected year is $3,400. I think I can afford $200 in providing increased ability for students to learn things, because I think we all depend on... because I think we all depend on the next generation to be, to be sitting here and to stand up here and be well educated enough to participate in making sure that society, as it changes, remains something that we all want to be part of. So I'll answer questions.
Yeah. Yes, we. Bonnie, then Gene, then Hank.
I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Jane, Jane.
Joe, how did you decide on what additional offerings to make? Did you do surveys of the students to see what you needed to do to beef up the high school, this is high school right now?
Well, yeah, we, we certainly talked to the teachers and the administration. We didn't do a specific survey of the students themselves because at that point, it was, the administration's input was more valuable to us because they deal with all of these issues all the time.
And how will you market Green Mountain High School to the students from Black River? How will they know what we've done?
Yeah.
Would it make this expenditure more, more of a...
Well, I mean, that's certainly part of the, the new cycle, it's, it's known. We've made, over the last several months, I think we've made some efforts of making sure that the Black River students know the availability, know that we are going to provide transportation. And if anybody that wants to come to Green Mountain will be in the right bus because we're going to send a bus. And so, and we also made sure that they knew what the program was. So we have made some efforts to, to sell ourselves, if you will, to potential students. As, as you may know, Green, Black River High School students come from just, not just Ludlow, but Mount Holly. Mount Holly is on the other side of the, of the district, basically very close to Mill River.
You don't remember it.
So that, we don't have an expectation that we have a lot of people coming from Mount Holly to come to us. We do, we do have an expectation that a majority of Ludlow children will consider us seriously.
Hank, and then, and then Ray.
Hank?
I'm not very proud of this 7.58% increase. And it's right in the book, the numbers. It's a, that's, nobody's salaries going up that much. The place is out of control. It's, we used to bet you it went up 2%, 7.5%. It's ridiculous. The difference between 2019 and 2020, it went up $381,000. In the proposed budget, they want 478, 699 more dollars. That's 500, that's $859,809 in two years, the cost of education. That is out of control. And anybody read the article, a nice article in the paper the other day about what's going down at the SU disparity, audit committee never got to see the audit. I sat on this, many of school boards and did a lot of budgets, and you get overwhelmed, and you get all these numbers and you have to make a decision, a millions of dollars at one meeting. So they form a committee to kind of have some oversight and screen it, and they don't even get the opportunity to get the job that was given to them. And they volunteer their time to do that, to help us taxpayers, and they were deprived of the information. And that isn't right. Then read the rest of that article, but they were awarded three contracts to principals without any, any, any money attached. Oh, we'll decide that later. Decisions like that are irresponsible to the taxpayers. I cannot see any explanation, there's no information in this book. You know, you see the cost of special education, but that is, that is a hard number to swallow, 7.58% in one year. Anybody that votes for this budget is suicidal, it's out of control. Then I understand on a kind of commendal, at least you didn't vote to renew the superintendent's contract, which is, she's announced her resignation at the end of the year. That makes number 12, there's 12 SUs in this state that don't have a sup, a superintendent. Do you think maybe that's because of this great money-saving act, Act 46? I haven't seen this, and nickel all you can see is the price going up and we have no control over it. So we don't have any school boards anymore. So the only thing that the taxpayers can do is to come down here and kill this budget so they sharpen their pencil and get the numbers a little bit more reasonable. And these decisions are giving out contracts.
Did you have a question?
For no, with no money attached. It's ridiculous.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, Ray.
You described how services available to students were enhanced in an effort to try to attract tuitioned students from Ludlow and Mount Holly. In the development of the budget, was there any pro forma assumptions as to how many students would be attracted and how much tuition that that would represent?
We, we expect, in the budget, we expect about 55 tuition students would come to Green Mountain. That obviously includes the ones that are already there. We have some tuition students that, we have some high school students that come from Ludlow on a high school exchange program that the state has, has mandated. We have, we also expect, we also have some tuition students that come from Graffin. And so there's a total of 55 that we expect to have at the next year's school population as, as tuitioners.
So if the cost of attracting these students, I realize that these services would be available to the existing students in addition to...
Yes, exactly.
The new students. But if, are the costs included, but the revenue associated with the additional tuition, is that also reflected?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we require, we have a tuition rate of somewhere around 17,000 miles for each tuition student. So everyone that comes to us brings that tuition with...
I realize they'll bring it, but in terms of developing the budget, did you crank in 55 students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, of course. I'm sorry, I, I guess I misunderstood the question.
Yeah. Before Gene, Chris.
Joe, the, it's 9%? Is that correct?
9.06%.
What's the, what's the population of the school for the upcoming year versus what it was last year? Is the, is the student body number the same?
No, it is not.
Is it higher or lower?
And, and that becomes something of a complicated question because the state determines what the ADM is. ADM meaning average daily membership. And the state has a formula that determines what that is. Our actual school, school population at the high school is 308 students at this point. That is 7 through 12, grade 7 through 12.
308.
308.
And is that the projected number for the budget for next year then?
For the, we expect more students from, and we don't know what that number is because the parents and the students, we have sent out questionnaires and requests to make their choices known for us to be able to plan on having them. Our returns for those have been very poor. We have returns from about 50, 52 people that have committed, have indicated that their first choice is Green Mountain. We will have to see what walks in the door when we open up on September.
So to be clear, you have, it's 308 plus something.
Yes.
But you don't know what it is.
We, we make projections.
Is the budget going to cover that?
Yes.
If there's more?
Yeah. Well, if, if, wait, wait a minute.
I'm, I'm, I know I'm putting you in a hard spot, I understand, but...
Yeah.
You've got, you have a budget projected for X number, not X plus 5, or X plus 10, or X plus 20?
Yeah, but, but look at, look at the practical. If there's an extra 10 students coming in, they're not all going to be in the same classroom. They're not all going to be in the same, so they may even admit additional two students in this classroom, four in that classroom. That doesn't require any additional expense. So we have constructed a budget that we think will do the job without making major changes to the, now, if we get 100 out of that 140 left, then we may have some additional expense. But then they will bring their money with them.
Jet and then import.
So I just, I'm going over the numbers here. In this complex, over $2 million for...
Yes, it does.
And of that, they only give back 688, all of it goes up to Mount Hillier. So that shows 76% of our taxes is education.
Right.
And of that, we only get 32% back. So when you say it's going to cost you an extra 200, of that 200, you're only getting $64 back because the rest of it stays up in Mount Hillier. So when you say, you stand up and say, well, it's only going to raise my taxes and I think $200, that $200 doesn't go here.
Of, of course.
76% of our taxes is school. So when is that going to change?
How?
When, how can we raise money for our own students?
If you go away with Act 60.
Exactly. But to say, oh, it's only going to raise, you know, I'm willing to put $200 towards our kids there, well, you're not. You're putting, most of that money is going to somebody else.
Well, I, and I totally agree with you.
And there's a lot of people, their taxes are a lot higher than their 200. So you're, a lot of people, you're raising their taxes for $500. That starts to add up.
And, and I don't, I don't dismiss that at all. It is, what I'm saying is the structure that the, the state has adopted for funding schools is what it is. It is not going to change.
But the 9% increase...
Yeah.
Is a lot more than that to the taxpayers here in town.
The 9% increase is substantial?
But, I mean, it's, I mean, to say it's 9%, it's actually a lot more than that because...
No, it's not.
Most of ours goes up to the, most of our money goes to Mount Hillier.
Correct. The percentage, you're going to increase your budget, is 9%?
No, no.
You got to talk about what comes back to the community.
Correct.
But that's, that's not a...
So to raise that 9%, they have to raise almost triple that.
Yes and no.
Because of Act 60, yes. Yes, if you stop it.
I'm going to remind, I'm going to remind the body to not engage in cross talk. I want to, I want to make sure we call on Gordon, and then one more question. Gordon.
Yeah, I just wanted to know whether everybody was in to know about how we get about 1/3 of the taxes that we pay for our local education. We're paying about $40,000 for our students to go to public school. And you know, you got to look at the whole picture. I don't agree, and it isn't going to be in the form of a question, I don't agree that we can't change the way the state's operating the system. Right now, it's a big take. There's a redistribution take, and they're not taking the transaction tax, they're taking your property from you. And we're not in a position where we can contribute to our own schools to improve their quality because of exactly what you pointed out. The 2/3 of the funds are going to the state for redistribution to others, for which, by the way, studies have been performed, and there's been no study demonstrating an improvement in condition and outcome from that kind of egalitarian application to date. So the question I have, Joe, is what do we do when we don't provide the difference between education and administration in our budgeting process so that us citizens can make a determination as to how much is going to the actual education of our kids versus how much is supporting administration, that is job, shifting from an emphasis to, from education to employment? How much of that is going on because we don't know? And how, what about the quality of it? And that is the absence of written curricula so we can examine, evaluate, and even perhaps look a little bit at performance to see how our kids can better perform under it? I don't see where all the money that we're giving to the state, and it's going there, 1.2 million this year, only 680 some going to our school district. And I'd like to find out a way in which we can turn that around with the state. So some of our hard-earned money, and I know maybe some people here have enough money that they can feel comfortable paying 3,000 bucks a year for educating people, but there are people in, even in this town, who lack a capacity to, to them, that's a large amount of money. So I'd like to know just exactly what's being done from a perspective of altering the way the thing is structured so we can start providing improvements for our students all along the line. And that means also the savings for those of us who pay the bill.
All right, here, let's answer that, and then take... One more question from...
How we've seen change the legislature is to elect people to the legislature that are willing to change it. That is the only way. We are a state that is, that has, where the legislature dictates everything we do as a town. As any political subdivision of the state, it is controlled by the state legislature. It is not. There is no mechanism that I know of that a town or a school district can say, we are not going to do this because we don't agree with it. And I, I think the question was, how do we change it? And the only thing that I could suggest is that you send people to the state legislature that will change it. And I can tell you right now, in the current legislature, there is no impetus to change Act 60, to change Act 46, and to change anything else that has happened in the schools.
Just bring it direct.
And that has to do with, factor, are you aware of the alternative that we have the power ourselves as towns to control our schooling? It's a direct constitutional grant. I don't agree that the legislature has that kind of control. And I, I want to make a motion that we organize a committee of oversight for our school district and the state as to the allocation and appropriation of our tax money so that they can be held accountable to us who have this authority to do our schools. It's a direct constitutional grant.
As you know, that is not on the morning.
What?
That is not on the morning, but what can happen is if you get signatures, and I've been encouraging you to do this, the town clerk can get this on the morning for next year. And I think this would be a very fruitful conversation to have. Because I, as I look around and I see a lot of heads nodding, some are shaking, you know, we're, we're all on all sides of this, but this is, this is an incredibly important issue. I want to hear from one person who hasn't been, been heard from on this issue, and then I'm going to move things along. Frank.
Okay. Joe, you mentioned we have to repeal Act 60.
I didn't say that.
What did you say?
I said that if you wanted to change it, you would have to repeal Act 60, which establishes how we pay for education.
Now, in Act 60, it says if education funds are used other than education, it nullifies Act 60. Now, that has happened many times, that thousands of dollars have been taken out and used to balance a budget or some other reason. Why has that not been nullified?
Because the legislature chose... Because the legislature chose to not do it.
Don't they by law have to?
Yes, they do, except that nobody's appealed their their action to the Supreme Court. And we have no way of doing anything about what the legislature does unless the Supreme Court says what you just did is illegal and you have to reverse it. And and I agree with you, this the education fund that was established by Act sixty is supposed to be used only for educational purposes. Now, we could stretch the definition of educational purchase or purposes because the legislature at some point decided that that includes educating prisoners in in our jails. And there are other things that they have done that skirt the definitions. But again
Balancing the budget is skirting the issue. It's outright wrong.
There you are. The legislature does what it does. And unless we have a vehicle that says you just did something wrong, they will prevail.
Well, one more comment, Paul.
It's, I've looked here for twenty years and I'm fat disheartened every single time you. And you can collect the legislature, however, Andover has five hundred constituents and Chester has twenty-five hundred. Guess who is not paying forty thousand dollars per student to send their kids to school? Everybody in Chester. So is our overall representative going to represent the five hundred people who are upset or the twenty-five hundred people who are happy? It's never going to change based on just the way the legislative division remains in the state population.
Except they're taking your property.
That's the state, that's Joe said, the legislators, they take it up.
No, nobody's challenged.
Right.
Well, I so I would encourage I would encourage this to get to get on the morning next year because I think it's entirely appropriate for the voters of Andover to affirm one way or another on this issue. You can certainly affirm displeasure with an unbalanced budget for the way education is is funded. And you can send a message to the legislature. I think the issue that all rings up is that representation is going to be a little bit of an issue. But I would encourage anyone who is who is concerned about this, and I think that's everybody from whatever perspective, to to and to also inform yourself about what is happening in the schools. I would say this meeting last week in the in the high school was really an eye opener for me, and I thank Joe and the team there for doing what I think is their best to kind of pull all that together. I would like to suggest, thank you, Joe, I would like to suggest that if there's any other business not having to do with the school budget at this time, that with the announcements and the other concerns, anything else that the the voters would bring. Yeah, Hank?
I'd suggest that everybody exercise their right. Come down here and vote and save your home.
Well, thank you for reminding us of the
There is a mechanism, and the mechanism is your vote. Your vote counts. Send a message. Exercise your your right. It's not illegal to vote.
Other announcements concerning I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
I would adjourn.
Bonnie has the motion. We have second. Jean is second. All is in favor, signify by signing a aye.
Aye.
Very much so. Information